All right, at this time I will file the August eighth, two thousand and twenty-two school board opinion of order. If you'd please rise and join me, I'd like to move it.
I'd like to move it to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, at this time I will call for a motion to approve the agenda, for the adoption of the agenda. Done the motions. Thank you, Mr. Sean Rock. Do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Starr. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same as aye. The motion carries. We'll move on to consideration of visitors. I do not have any consideration of visitors, so we'll move on to the approval of the consented agenda. Do you have a motion to approve the consented agenda? So, thank you, Ms. Anderson. Do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Schwartz. Is there any discussion?
I'd like to poll. For A, the minutes, school board minutes.
We'll poll for A. Is there any further discussion? Seeing no discussion, the motion will be to approve items B, C, and D. Do you have a motion to approve? Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same as aye. The motion carries. We'll move on to the approval of item A. Do you have a motion to approve item A? So, thank you, Mr. Anderson. Do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Starr. Discussion, Ms. Johnson.
Okay, so there's just an error. The consideration to approve the Minnesota High School League, it says that I said nay, and that was not the case. I said nay about the consideration to approve the activity sports fees, I believe. Have I got that right? The Minnesota Board Association, oh, the the membership fee.
The motion was-
So, the consideration to approve Minnesota School Board Association to twenty-two, twenty-three membership fee. We didn't have a membership fee amount, so I said no to that, nay to that. But it shows that we carried five to zero. I did not say nay to consideration to approve Minnesota High School League.
Well-
It's just the fee. So, there's two separate motions here. Do you see it?
Oh, look here. So, you're looking under the minutes. I gotta pull them out.
Yeah.
There was one motion, if I'm thinking back in my mind.
Well, the the membership fee for the, um, the membership fee for the Minnesota High School League.
And because there was-
I said, yeah, because there wasn't a fee identified, I said no, but it says five-zero. And it says, the other one says five-one. Five-to-one. Do you see it, anybody? Yeah, yeah. It's the, it's the approval of the membership fee to the Minnesota High School League that I said nay to, not to the overall Minnesota High School League, participation in.
I think I see the discrepancy.
Yeah. I agree that we should be part of the Minnesota High School League. I just didn't agree that we should approve the fee that we didn't know what was.
I think there was just ones, there was one motion on the Minnesota High School League.
Was chosen to.
The motion, there was, no, there was one underneath the consideration to approve the activity sports fees. And that's different than, um-
Here's the Minnesota's association membership fees. I said no. Here's the consideration to approve Minnesota High School League.
Okay, this is the Minnesota School Board Association. You said yes to the Minnesota School Board Association.
Okay, so this is-
And this was flipped. This was flipped. And so, we did the Minnesota High School League before the activities league, even though it was on the agenda, it was flipped. But you did vote against this.
I voted against the membership fee. Okay.
This is correct.
How was it?
Membership fee, okay. Yes, you did go against the, um, the, the motion to approve the Minnesota High School League, and you based it on because there wasn't a fee.
Okay.
But there was only one resolution. It wasn't separated?
Okay, my error. Okay.
Is that, are you comfortable with that?
Yep, I am.
Mr. Hope.
I was reading it wrong.
I think then where you're confusing me perhaps is the activity and sports fees. That's our districts that we voted on versus the-
Okay, got it. My apologies.
No, you're fine. That's always bring up a concern that I have up in the top row. Is there any other discussion? Seeing no discussion, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same as aye. The motion carries. We'll move on to information, items and reports. The first one is on the educational technology update.
Oh, it's up. It's hard to get your phone, guys. I've been saving this all week.
Welcome, Mr. Cherry. Hi.
Can I get this part here? Let's do one funny thing. Break this stuff. Oops. Um, you know, it's not that important. Here, here. I'll go. Okay.
There's funny magic table.
That's fine. That's fine. We're not gonna run into the magic table. Thank you. Uh, okay, so I just have a couple of minutes, and I try to update you frequently on the changes or things that we have going on. Um, we are sort of in the middle of the hardest six weeks of the school year for the tech department. I'd say from about the first week of August until the second week of school is done. Um, we can't run fast enough or fix anything fast enough, and you really, there's days where you feel like you have reverse smidus touch trying to get everything working, so it's a real treat. Um, but we've worked really hard for, gosh, really since for last year, but really since, um, the springtime to get all of our stuff ready for the MacBooks and iPads going to our schools. And it's been so many people to thank, you know, from buildings and grounds dragging around nineteen-hundred iPads in a truck and shuffling Chromebooks places to our people getting stuff set up. So, I want to say thanks to, um, Jared Woodbury left us. He's moved to Dallas, Texas. It's not that he didn't like being here, but he didn't feel like he could commute. So, we still have though Liz Coring, Chelsea Ogrin, Tracy Peterson, and Hannah Kruger, the four people on my staff who have just worked super, super hard. And then I think some of you might remember Larry Brockner. He's still doing some work with us in data. So, thanks to those guys for everything there. Um, if school had to open tomorrow, I think tech-wise, we'd be ready. I wouldn't like to open tomorrow, but I think if we had to, we would. Our sound systems are done, are, will be done on this side. We just went through and did walkthroughs on the west side of the district this week. And then, starting next week, will be the two schools on the east side, and then the last step will be early family childhood center. And we started using those systems this last week for teacher academy, and I think people were really surprised by the quality. And, oh, you can just have a normal speaking voice in a classroom or whisper voice, and even the kid in the back of the room can hear it, which is really nice. Um, the other thing, and this is why I was gonna show you, but it's not that big a deal, is I put it in the packet. We're trying to build some self-sufficiency, because I think that there's sort of, like especially where do things plug in, or how do I hook up, or, gosh, I didn't know I could print a poster from my Mac. How do I do that, right? Or, so how do I do those things? Or, I can print from home. I didn't know I could do that. So, all of this kind of stuff, we're trying to break down into videos that are somewhere from one to three minutes in length, but no more than three. Um, so that, and just giving people the exact information they need in that one more step. So, um, we made one that's thirty-nine seconds long for just how to plug your parts together so your computer can project. Or, another one is like fifty seconds long. It's how to make audio from your computer come out of the sound system in your room. Just real simple stuff like that. Um, with the idea that we can help people be more self-sufficient. And so, that's sort of on trend culturally right now, and we know that people are mentally fatigued. Um, there's a real attention span problem for adults and kids right now, and I think this will help in a lot of ways. So, that's kind of my, it's the item I put in the packet for you to consider tonight, just to think about. So, that's really, it's my best two or three minutes. But anyhow, we've got great people working for us, and we're looking forward to the fall.
Do I have any questions? Comments? Yes, Mr. Hope.
Thank you for coming in tonight. Has anyone figured out how to make the sound work?
Well, we just, the answer is no, but we, I mean, we just looked at it like a minute ago, so.
Okay.
But, um, Kim and I, I think we'll just reinstall everything.
Okay. And then our provisions, I think Brandon had mentioned that we're recording.
Yeah.
And so, how does the public access that?
So, what'll hap, all that will happen is Amanda will bring it into Canva, which is the platform we use for all of our video, video editing. So, she'll import in the video, and then she'll import in the audio. It'll be pretty easy to line them up. You just slide a ruler and then export it as one big movie.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, it's a problem.
Yes, Mr. Schwartz.
In Lingam's Joneses?
Yeah.
How does the sound thing work? I mean, how does it project out?
Sure. Okay, so every classroom has four speakers in the ceiling, and there's an amplifier that's mounted in the ceiling tiles above. So, most classrooms already had power in the ceiling. So, what we did was we used a ceiling-mounted amplifier, and then the teacher wears a teardrop microphone. And then, um, you get it properly adjusted, and then you just walk around and talk all day. There's a student microphone that they can, every classroom has, so they can hand it to students, um, which is nice, especially with younger kids who have such quiet voices sometimes, and yeah. And it also is kind of good. It's like whoever has the microphone can talk. So, does that answer your question, Derek? Yeah.
Yes, Mr. Starr.
And to follow up with the microphone for the teacher, your sub teachers coming in, that microphone always with the teacher in the classroom, because when the sub comes in, they probably won't know technology enough like Mike Starr, how to turn it on, turn it off. Because I speak the loud voice in class anyway, so.
Well, here's what we'll find out. For that, it's pretty easy, because all you need to fix a problem like that is a seventh grader. It's just, the, the microphones stay in the classroom.
Okay.
Okay, because they're paired, here's the thing, is that they're paired to the amplifier in the classroom. So, if I leave my room and I'm still wearing my microphone, once I'm out of range of the amplifier, like if I walk by, then Ryan's classroom wouldn't pick up and start broadcasting on his, on his system.
Okay.
And then, um, so that's the short answer. So, they'll stay in the classroom.
Any other questions?
Mr. Cherry, if I could just ask a question. When, when did you start working here?
Uh, July last year.
So, just over a year you've been employed. It's, uh, the reason I ask is that I'm incredibly impressed with the amount of work or the transformation that's taken place since that time. So, uh, Mr. Cherry is one of the first people I talked to, and of course, we've talked for two hours.
That's true.
Um, and I felt guilty about it afterwards, but he, he went through all the different things that have happened since he started here, and it blew my mind away. So, the money is being well-spent on technology, and I can see the differences. Um, and the, the things I listed in the update are just some of the things that have happened recently. You know, if you go back another, you know, since July last year, it's remarkable. So, thank you for-
Thank you. Thanks all for the opportunity. Have a nice night.
Thank you very much. All right, uh, next report is community education.
I'm so glad the technology didn't work the technology guy.
I, when he put together the PowerPoint, I said, "You little turkey. I'm not doing that. I'm not doing that." So, thank you, School Board and Chair Kelly. Appreciate the opportunity. Uh, Superintendent Anderson, thank you for allowing us to the opportunity to do this tonight. Um, I'm not gonna read to you. You're highly intelligent people, and you can read for yourself. I do think there's tremendous energy in the words that have been provided and afforded to you, uh, and I'm super, super proud of our managers, our community head managers, for putting forward that energy. Um, you can read that there's five areas. We have uh, youth rec. Brad Kraus talks about some of our numbers in youth rec and how they're back up. Uh, I received a, an email from one school board member saying, "Hey, what's that forty percent increase due to?" I want to be clear, we're back to normal. Like, we have increased by forty percent. Our forty percent increase got us back to where we were kind of pre-pandemic, right? Um, you know, for better or for worse, there was a, there's, the population in my world was divided into two chunks last year. Those who were ready to move on from COVID and those who still just kind of weren't sure. And I think that forty percent increase we saw was that group of people who just kind of weren't totally ready to dive both feet into the pool. They came back this summer. Um, and so, we're, that's, that's cause for celebration, right? Have we grown exponentially? No. Do we want to? Yes. But did we finally get back to where we need to be? Yes. So, we're happy about that. I think Brad's probably, the, the best thing he said there was at the end, and this tickles my heart, because this is something that we've been doing for a long time in St. Francis football, is we have the older kids work with the little kids at camp. And even my own son, uh, worked the camp, and he came home, and I said, "Hey, oughta go." And he said, "Man, some of those middle schoolers are pretty lippy, Dad." I said, "Woo, I got him up, the only one." Uh, but it is. It's a wonderful thing. The kids eat it up, and my own three kids went through it here, so I know how much it means to little kids. And, uh, and I've even had parents come back years later and said, "Do you remember saying this to my son when he was there at that age?" Uh, it made all the difference in the world. So, um, kudos to Brad for recognizing that. It's a pretty special thing, and it happens at a lot of our camps. It just doesn't happen to the large scale that it does for football because of the number of kids that are participating. So, um, Chris Schlatman, uh, if you don't know Chris, she is a tremendous, tremendous asset to our organization. She does great things in childcare. Uh, she has a tough job, right? Uh, raising other people's kids at that young age when they're not around is, is, can be fraught with challenges. And she, she dances those lines as well as anybody. Does a nice job. Uh, you can tell by what she has said that our numbers are up. We're past where we were in the pandemic. There is tremendous need for growth for childcare. Um, and so, we'll look at doing some expansion next year to kind of continue to meet the needs of our community, right? I mean, that's what that's all about. So, um, I did think it was, it was fun to read in there when, when, when she wrote, uh, she's got a babysitting class, and she's actually doing something about the shortage of childcare workers. She's training kids to be childcare workers, right? Kudos to Chris for doing that. So, great stuff. Uh, Jen Dupre is our early childhood family, um, uh, center super program supervisor. She talks a lot in here about current numbers, um, uh, the need for early childhood screening. I don't know if the board is aware of this, but Melissa Denning writes a grant as a part of our early childhood program, and that grant is the largest funded grant. It's partnered with Centennial School District, but it's the largest funded grant that an upper county puts out toward schools. Uh, and so, we do a really, really, really outstanding job of, uh, targeting those early, uh, childhood kind of experiences for families and kids. Um, adult basic ed, this is a program that we need to grow, and desperately need to grow. Uh, I'm not, I don't sugarcoat things, and I'll come right out and say it. Uh, we moved years ago from the early childhood building next door to the learning center, and our numbers and our participation fell through the floor. Uh, this is not a great location in terms of access. If you don't drive, how do you get here? Uh, we're not on ma, on a major thoroughfare. Highway sixty-five is a much bigger route to get from N2, um, but we saw numbers drop. The pandemic obviously then kicked that into high gear, and we've seen numbers even drop more than that. Uh, Tammy Bernard resigned at the end of the school year. She's retired. I should say retired, not resigned. Um, and we were able to hire Maria from St. Cloud. She lives in Big Lake, works in St. Cloud, wanted a smaller school district, spent in adult basic ed for a lot of years, like twenty-something. Um, and so, we're getting an experienced person who's been a coordinator and an ABE teacher, and our role asks you to do some of both of that. So, we're really excited to get her in here. We've also recently, and I'll bring in Tri Valley Head Start, which is leasing our Sand Hill building. Um, we've partnered with Tri Valley to say, "Hey, you're working with migrant families. We would like to provide educational services to the parents of those migrant families. How can we partner together?" And so, we met up at the Bethel Building and had a nice hour and a half conversation about what that might look like. We also are, uh, in, in conversation with Anoka Henepet, who's our fiscal host for ABE. They take in all the money and they distribute it. It's a consortium, and they're brainstorming ideas for us. So, I'm, I'm convinced we will grow that program. Uh, we're hitting it at the right time, and I think with Maria's help, we'll get some momentum moving forward. And then adult enrichment, uh, facilities and driver's training, that's a really weird job title, right? If you think about that. Um, Nancy Messerschmidt's been in that role. Uh, I'm glad the sound's not on. I don't know how long Nancy's been here, but it's, she's been around for a while. Um, her and Len both moved here, uh, twenty-five, thirty years ago, maybe. Does that sound about right? I mean, it's been, she's had quite the career here, and, and she's seen that, that role change and morph. Uh, she went into phased retirement last year. We had another staff member there helping her out. That other staff member was part-time, has resigned for other work. And so, we're, we're kind of nursing ourselves through a part-time Nancy, trying to figure out how to do driver's training without people, uh, willing to serve in that driver's training role. We've got one driver's instructor, one, one. We've got no classroom behind-the-wheel people. We did recently work with, uh, HR and the union to put together an MOU to increase the pay rate. Hadn't been raised in eighteen years. And so, our driver's ed instructor, who's a longtime employee, a valued employee of our district, has kind of been getting lowballed for a long time. And we said, "Look, we want to make it worth your while. We want you to keep doing it. We want to excite other people to come and, and try to do this." Um, so we've made some changes there. It's been challenged this last year with losing the Sand Hill building. Where does Lunch Lunch go? Uh, that's a really, um, robust program. The, the people who enjoy that really enjoy it. We have folks drive out from Owatonna to watch shows. We have people drive from Richfield and Roseville. I mean, people come from a wide, uh, a really wide swath. Uh, we've partnered with the Bridge Church out in Nolan, um, pastor, former pastor, Chris Vincent's, uh, just, I mean, he's a hometown guy. It's great to work with. Miss him tremendously already, but they opened their, their, their building to us and said, "Come on in. Welcome. We'd love to have you." And so, we found a nice little home there. Uh, I'm not sure how long that home will be there. It's, we're, we're good for this year, but we'll keep exploring opportunities much beyond. So, anyway, uh, I'm excited to be back. I'm excited. It's August. There's tremendous energy in our buildings. There's tremendous energy in our staff and our programs, and, uh, I'll take questions if you have any. You gave him a couple, so you're okay to pass with me.
I had a question here about driver's ed. It was on the news tonight, matter of fact, nationwide about the lack of, uh, driver's ed teachers in the high school. So, you see, we only have one driver's ed instructor.
We don't have any behind the classroom, uh, behind, we don't have any classroom instructors at all. We outsourced that. The state has allowed us to do online, um, classroom stuff because of the shortage, but we have one behind-the-wheel instructor.
One. Did you enter a program to hire additional? Or how does that, what do we, what do we do to fix it?
That's a great question. I think everyone across the state is asking that question.
Right.
Starts with paying them a, a fair marketable wage.
Because you have to have a, a teacher's license, correct, to teach it or behind the wheel, or there are exceptions.
Yeah, it's kind of like childcare. There's different rules for different organizations. If you are in, running this program through a school, then you have to be a teacher. Okay? If you're running it through, you know, Jake Humphries Driving School, uh, is not affiliated, he's a, I, he knows how to drive this lift I learned today, so I know he can drive. If he's doing it, he doesn't have to be a licensed teacher or employ licensed teachers. So, there's different rules, kind of like for licensed childcare. There's different rules for licensed versus non-licensed. And we fall into that category of having to be more restrictive in terms of who we can employ. The legislature's working on that. People are talking about it. Who knows when that'll change.
Okay.
Yes, Mr. Sean.
So, does the adult basic education have to be limited to one location?
No.
Could we do something and see if we could re-strat if there was rooms that are available?
Um, in theory, yes. It's more appropriate if we compare, uh, combine it with early childhood, right? For a couple of reasons. One, the clientele fits better. Two, uh, we really need to be aware of who's coming in and out of our buildings for safety and security, and doing that in a school with nine hundred elementary kids is a real daunting task if they're all mixed in the same general population, right? So, yes, we'll have, we're gonna have a satellite office at early childhood. We'll do satellite classes at, uh, the Bethel Building, Sand Hill, and then we'll still do classes here. So, we should hit a nice triangle in this district.
I just wasn't sure, since I know we took out the, took out some space there. I'm sure they still have space available.
Yeah, it depends on the building. And it depends on our numbers. We're crunching, we're crunching numbers constantly to see what class sizes and where things, so, yeah. But I think we have a good spot over at ECF. Seat picked up. I like the way you think, Sean Rock. I like the way you think.
Yes, Mr. Hope.
So, there's been a lot of, uh, turnover in our cabinets, and everyone's really stepping up, and I'd like to just say kudos to Mr. Lindkiss, because, uh, this is unbelievable. I'm part of that committee, the community ed, and, uh, could you explain, or can you, yeah, tell people about like the fall kind of situation?
So, I hope, I hope this isn't too entry-level, but we have a community ed advisory council. By, by statute, you have to have one. So, um, have to meet at minimum four times a year. Ours has chosen to meet five. Uh, and last year, we started, we kicked off with the Community Connect event, and that really led into, hey, we should really do something community-wide. Because community ed, we should be the fun people, right? We really should be the fun people. And yes, we have some things to do that maybe aren't so fun, but we should be the fun, the, what we do is fun, right? We provide recreation opportunities. We provide adult enrichment opportunities. Like, that's fun stuff. That's lifelong learning. It's good. So, to piggyback, um, coming out of COVID, coming out of the, the, the society where everybody, not everybody, where too oftentimes we are at odds with one another, you know? I'm tall, you're short, uh, my hair's long, yours, I mean, it, it's just always, we're looking for differences. And we find that we have way more in common with each other if we just choose to focus on what we have in common, and that's good stuff. So, I was talking with Mr. Schwartz before the meeting about National Night Out. Essentially, what we're gonna do is do a big homecoming festivity this fall, right? Uh, we'll lump in student council to get some kids involved. We're gonna work with, uh, some of our, our smaller clubs at the high school, and we're gonna really try to make this a big community event. Um, we think we can pull in some, some, some ethnic food trucks, which I don't know about the rest of you, but the food up here in St. Francis leaves a lot for me to desire. And so, if we can pull in a Trickster Taco, which is a Native American food truck, if we can pull in a Vietnamese food truck, if we can, if we can maybe do something and encourage, hey, what's a great way for people to socialize? Well, it starts with food, and it starts with, uh, some kind of entertainment. And we can provide both of those at, uh, at a homecoming football game. And so, what we'd really like to do is bring the community together, um, start it early, and maybe we can get the marching band out there, the drum line out there. Maybe, uh, Mads wants to sing, or, or, who, who knows how big this goes. Yeah. We'll give J. Open Mic Night. You don't want this. So, so we're looking, uh, we're looking for a big extravaganza, kind of kick off the school year. And, gosh darn it, that's what our community really is, is it's, it's people coming together and, uh, you know, there's no, we don't need anything. We don't need you to do anything. We just need you to show up and be part of it, right? Like, be engaged. And I think that's the message. Um, October, uh, you put me on the spot. I, October seventh, I believe, it's Friday night homecoming. Um, and that, that'll be what we target. So, should be a good time. Should be a good night. There's a lot, I haven't started working too much on it, so thanks for the reminder. Mr.-
Mr. Starr.
Uh, going back to, uh, driver's ed again, uh, education allows community experts in the classroom. We had them at Denny's Sergeant next door, had them at the auto shop for maintenance for automobiles. What about in driver's ed? Can I get a community expert for the classroom to do instruction?
Good question. I don't have any answer for that.
Good idea. I mean, a community ed, I mean, if you can find someone, a retired cop, a retired trooper, you know, whatever.
A Mike Starr.
Come in. They can come in, teach driver's ed in the classroom where a community expert. Until you find that licensed person. I'm just an idea, again, open the doors to try and get our program working.
And I know the volume's not on tonight, but we'll get it on, and it'll get on the web. So, I'll say this for everyone's benefit. If you're interested in, in doing that, in serving, call Nancy Messerschmidt.
Right.
And, and, and get that boss to figure it out. Uh, if you are interested and want to help, we'd love to have you, right? We won't turn down good people. We'd love to have you.
Yes, Ms. Johnson.
Sounds like an opportunity for the website.
You're, you're correct. You're correct. Until, and we haven't posted a position. That's kind of how we've worked in the past, is we create a posting with a job description, and then we have it. But, but yeah.
Yes, Mr. Sean.
Sorry, one little thing. She brought the website.
The communications update's like in a month. I can't talk about it now. I gotta save that. It's in the, no, I'm kidding.
Never mind.
I'm kidding.
I heard you had a big part in that.
Yeah.
Thank you. My wife, who is, goes on there now and just loves it that she can just navigate through and find what she's looking for, whereas before it was kind of-
Well, we're, you don't have the full product yet either. That's the exciting thing. So, there, there will be, um, uh, there's an app being developed that's our, unique to us. It's our app. And you don't, uh, the idea and premises is all of you have your phones. Mine's sitting back there. Uh, we're not jumping on a laptop computer. We're not opening a browser on our phone to go to a website. We're using apps to be engaged. And so, this company is the forefront, a kind of a- And so this company is the forefront, a kind of a leader in that market or that development. Uh, rather than having to click seven times to find out what's for lunch today, uh, it's right there in the app. And, uh, and so that's powerful. The other thing that's really powerful is with a few setup and a little bit of training, not real much. Uh, anyone in our district can take photos and create their own content or stories about what's going on and unique and positive. And they can submit that for posting on the website. We have a vetting process so that we don't get ahead of ourselves and maybe submit something we shouldn't or something that's inaccurate. Um, but it really arms every employee in our district who's interested or school board member, right? To say, hey, I was at, I was at this meeting or I was at this event and I saw this happen and this brought joy, a great joy to my heart. You can share that now in a very, uh, similar way that you would share something on Facebook or you would have, uh, kind of a screen or scrolling timeline, if you will. So we're, we're, we're really excited that that gets launched and maybe we can tap into some resources to, Jake's talked about it a lot, spread the good word. There's a lot of good things happening that people don't know about. So we're optimistic. Yeah.
Yes, Mr. Schwartz?
That's, that's where your research, my kids have been. What is the cost these days of classroom and then the behind wheel?
Oh.
What was the question again?
Cost of the.
What's the cost of the classroom? Like you.
Let me get back to you. I don't want to misspeak. Let me get back. I'll do the research and get back.
Okay. And the classroom and then the behind the wheel. I was just curious.
Any further questions?
All right. Don't get back to the problem.
If I could add one more thing, and I'm gonna sound like a broken record every time, you know, district minister speaks, but you talked earlier about, um, somebody with an odd title. And you are the director of community education and communications and buildings and grounds and crisis management and probably a lot of other things. So I rely, I think all of us rely on Chris a lot. And, uh, the fact that we're able to have one person do all of those roles so well, I think is a testimony that we protect taxpayer dollars. And, uh, you know, and yeah, even with that, you know, we were able to put a great product on. So I really appreciate your presentation.
Thank you.
You have always such a great smile and you bring such enthusiasm. That is so much appreciated because it feeds off.
Yeah.
I know those who work with you and it's just great because your energy feeds off of other people. So.
Kim was, Kim was giving Vanessa a tour earlier. She said, if you want to, if you want quiet work, you need to stay on that side.
Right? Mr. Stein.
To help me out because I reminded me of a question I had, and I'll save it for you, but being we have buildings and grounds here in front of us. We were referred to him anyways. How are our buildings look coming into school here in another thirty-some days? How are we looking?
You know, this is a great question, right? Uh, Rob and Jake and I were really kind of getting after a project about, I don't know, hour and a half or two hours ago. Um, and, and right now they're sanding, uh, the gym floors at the high school, right? Uh, and there's something really, forgive the football reference, but the smell of fresh cut grass in the fall, right? You know what I'm talking about? That same feeling I get every time we go back to school and I see floors polished and waxed. And there's something about that that says, hey, we are, we are darn near ready to start this party. Right? We're, we're, we're really close to our guests arriving for this, uh, celebration that we're gonna have for the school year. Um, they're looking good. They're looking good. We, we're still short-staffed at the high school. Uh, we've hired a bunch of student labor this summer. Um, they've been working their tail off. Uh, Brayden Feeney, if you know Brayden, who's a senior pitcher of baseball team. Beautiful long hair. I'm jealous, of course, but, uh, Brayden's in there working and our custodial staff are like, these guys, these kids are working, working hard. So the buildings are looking good. Um, we need to get full staffed. We need to be able to maintain what the hard work we put into it, and that's our next challenge. But we're getting there, Mike. It's, yep. It's not like three years ago where we were scrambling.
Yeah, the last month.
No, we're, we're scrambling to finish up projects that are enhancement projects. We're not, we're not scrambling to be ready. Does that make sense?
Okay.
With the high school being the only building to my knowledge that's, um, not fully staffed, is it that it's open so many hours with so many things going on or what, what causes that building to be different than the others?
It's an excellent question. May I talk about what we've been trying to do? Okay. That building is vastly more work than any other building we have, right? Every major event happens at that building. Now, I'm not here, I'm not trying to take away from kindergarten connect. I'm not trying to take away from open house at the elementary schools. Those are critical and important to those families and those kids, right? But it's not a football game. It's not a choir concert. It's not a Mads dinner. It's not any of those things. And all of those events happen at the high school.
Weekly.
Daily.
Two days.
And I, I can tell you because of my, yeah.
Well, yes, cause it's choir concerts, football games, basketball games, wrestling. Um, it's, that building is open for our community.
Correct.
Basically.
Seven days a week.
Seven days a week. Yes.
Correct. So it takes more resources to run that than it does other buildings. And quite honestly, it's easier to work at another building than it is at the high school. There's less, there's less stress, right? Um, and so what Brandon and I have partnered with, uh, conversations with Chris Wirth, who's really the direct supervisor of our custodial staff, right? Uh, talking with our union is to offer a pay differential for working at the high school. Right? The demands are greater, so we will pay you some more. We've had custodian after custodian start at the high school and leave and migrate to another building because the demands of the job aren't as great. So that's, that's our next foot forward, trying to, to really make a difference. Maybe we entice some of those custodian who, custodians who've left to come back. Uh, but when you're cleaning up a gym after a wrestling match that, you know, it's a triangular or quad and it's ten-thirty at night on a Tuesday and you gotta turn around and cover somebody the next day and then you gotta turn around and stay late. I mean, that, that, those demands don't happen in every building, so it's unique in that manner. Yeah.
Thank you for explaining that.
It's only seven hundred thousand square feet of real estate to clean.
Yes, Mr. Johnson.
Don't we staff differently based on that?
If we could hire, we would.
Okay. So, I mean, do we, are we?
We have been unsuccessful at finding and retaining good employees.
So we have people that are going to the elementary schools. So are they not, is their day not as full or they not have as much? I mean, usually you just put more, more resources to the bigger building.
Well, you couple that with retirement. We do have more resources at the bigger building, but we haven't been able to fill the positions.
Yeah, okay.
And the, and the cost of turnover here again is, is incredible. Dean Whitliff, if you've ever met Dean, um, you know, he lives up by Kim in that crazy, you know, area north of town here.
Yeah.
Uh, Dean was a thirty-year employee, right? Dean played and graduated from St. Francis High School. Dean lived this community. And when we lost Dean, we lost a tremendous amount of institutional knowledge. We lost a tru, I mean, Glenn's filling in great at the high school, but he doesn't know what he doesn't know. He was waxing the floors just inside the, the, the main entrance the other day. Well, there's no way for anyone to get up to the main office if you just wax those floors on, on Monday. Like, it's not his fault. He'll learn his lesson. He will do it again. We didn't have those issues with Dean because he'd been here.
Sure.
And when things can kind of run like clockwork or when, when you and I work long enough together, I can anticipate your next move and maybe I can do something to make it a little easier for you. And we're just, we don't have that luxury right now. Not only are we short-staffed, but we lack experience.
We lack the experience. Okay.
Well, I'm glad to hear you guys are.
Yeah, we're trying.
Yeah.
I'm telling you, we're trying. Thank you for that effort.
Thank you for all you do because you guys are all doing a tremendous job.
It's a good team.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We'll move on to Mr. Anderson for his update.
Great. I have a written report in the board packet, but I'll just highlight some of the items. First of all, I'd like to introduce Vanessa Toll. Uh, she will, uh, be the assistant of the superintendent starting tomorrow, but she came in today to at least shadow Kim on the board book work and some other things. And she'll be starting in there tomorrow. Uh, Kim is, uh, planning to, uh, work with her as much as she possibly can. So appreciate that, Kim, as well. Uh, but, uh, Ms. Toll, uh, comes to us from Hennepin County Court System where she's had, uh, quite a experience over the last few years. And so, uh, she wants to, to work where she lives. Uh, and so she'll be, uh, working with us and I'm thrilled to have her. She comes highly regarded. And, uh, she'll, she'll be ready. There's no doubt about it. Even though there'll be a big learning curve. So welcome to ISD fifteen.
Thank you. Happy to be here.
The, uh, uh, we already talked about the audio. I'm not working last time, thankfully. Uh, Director Nelson did bring the backup audio, so we'll put that up on the website after the meeting. So they won't be able to see things during the meeting, uh, but at least as soon as possible afterwards. That'll work. Uh, we do have a school board election, uh, coming up in November. Uh, just a reminder about the filing dates. Uh, and, uh, we do take candidates through August sixteenth. You can see the, the times at the offices is, uh, open, uh, for filing cabinet candidacy. And then, uh, Mr. Bautchuk did include some election-related information as a link in the report. Uh, Mr. Lindquist, uh, is overseeing kind of a significant reworking of our crisis management, uh, plan. And so more will be forthcoming in terms of information. And I'm sure at some point this fall, I'll have a closed session to kind of review our progress there because we don't share that information publicly uh, for obvious reasons. Uh, Mr. Humphrey did, uh, our Humphreys did bring up, uh, the point about COSPA, uh, which is a different national organization that the Minnesota School Board Association decided to actually help find or found, um, or were founding member. Uh, and so there's just a brief summary of what that entity is. And I think it's a much better fit, uh, for MSBA uh, and for St. Francis area schools and really, uh, Minnesota schools. Uh, so we're, we're glad about that change. Uh, I know that there was a good discussion last time about the state high school league, especially the timing of the costs. So I reached out to state high school league the next day to try to get some information. Uh, eventually talked to the representative from there, uh, but I haven't received yet the information that I had requested. And so, uh, I will be reaching out, I think, to the superintendent representative, uh, who is new, uh, in that role. And so I'll, I'll get the message across, uh, not only as far as the fees, uh, but also in terms of just overall transparency. Uh, so I think the public should be able to go on their website and immediately find, uh, the notes from those board of directors meetings. So I'll at least convey that, you know, the best I can. Our American Indian Education Program and current advisory committee is doing exceptionally good work. And I, I included a, a summary that Haley had provided, uh, as far as some of the work that they did this summer. And one of the things that I really appreciated is that they're doing a lot of work over the summer. So they had good momentum during the school year. They're continuing that work. We had the graduation, uh, gathering, uh, they had a booth up for, um, East Bethel Days, you know, some of those kinds of things. It's, uh, so I really, I included some other, other work that they've done. Uh, and, uh, you know, I'll invite them to an upcoming board meeting so they can give a, you know, more detailed, uh, report at that time. Another thing that I'll, I'll bring up, uh, as a highlight is that the city of St. Francis is pursuing a possible development, uh, option just on the other side of Highway forty-seven. So it'd be the northeast corner, think about a hundred and thirty acres or so. So they did have a rough draft go through the planning commission and, uh, the city council, uh, approved moving forward with, you know, more detailed planning. So I just want you to be aware, uh, that there is some, some work in that direction. Right now, the latest, uh, would be that, uh, there could be a three hundred, or over three hundred units, uh, in that, uh, one development. That would include medium density homes, uh, plus a, a one hundred-plus unit apartment complex. So they're talking about it and I wanted you to, to be aware of that. You know, obviously they have everything posted on the website, you know, they have public meetings. They, they go through a, a good process there, but I wanted you to, to be aware of it. Uh, they did express interest in coming to a board meeting, uh, to give a presentation or an update about some of their comprehensive planning. So I'll talk to, uh, Ms. Kelly to see if that might work into our schedule. And if so, we'll invite them as well as the city of Bethel, the city of East Bethel, and anybody else who, who wants to have that uh, kind of co-communication efforts. So that's all I have unless you have some questions for me.
Mr. Stein.
I want to know what their plans are for that intersection with three hundred new homes going in. It's only been a couple of years of bait going back and forth. What are they gonna do along forty-seven?
Yeah, they did not address that during, uh, the sessions that I attended, the planning commission or the city council meeting. Uh, cause it really was a kind of a conceptual view of the work so far. Another related issue is, uh, you know, what would the road look like on the north end of that development? So there's some, some questions that, that were brought up by community members. And so I'm sure the planning commissioner will be looking at that. So I don't know what their, their plans are for the intersection at that.
Is that our last school board meeting, was it? They crashed and burned out there a month ago. They were standing in the parking lot. And these two were right there, right behind it in another multiple time at that intersection.
Yeah, I know it's a significant issue. That's something that, you know, I experience every day because I'm driving through East Bethel here. And, uh, yeah, traffic is, is, uh, busy at that intersection. There's no doubt. And if you have three hundred units, then that's gonna complicate things further.
Yes, Mr. Schwartz? Um, we, the kindergarten members, they were still kind of hanging around two fifty?
Uh, yes. Yeah, they've gone up slightly. Uh, and, uh, we do have a meeting, uh, this week, uh, some of the district cabinet members to kind of review class sizes across the board. So we, we've gone up a little bit. Uh, right now, class sizes are somewhere between nineteen and twen, or nineteen and twenty-two in kindergarten. Uh, and so we'll review that this week. Uh, that's, you know, pretty reasonable class sizes for kindergarten from my perspective. But, you know, we want to regularly review those class counts just to make sure, you know, that we have a adequate staff and team members.
Mr. Humphrey.
A couple of things. Um, APAC, uh, Andrea, she was talking about work. She meant to come to the meeting and, uh, she's looking for um, some information on the non-concurrences. And I don't know if it's just getting off the ground and I, I know we switched, uh, directors from this person to, uh, um, this Kirchley, Principal Kirchley.
Mm-hmm.
So just looking for where, uh, pusher, but also that'd be great if we could invite them to the, uh, table here, um, formally, but also she apologizes for not coming to the meeting. She wanted to be here. So if we have any information in that regard?
Uh, not at this time.
Okay.
But, uh, I can certainly work with, uh, Andrea and others on that, on that particular project.
Great. Thank you very much. And then my second, my second one. Um, have we considered getting back to having a student on the school board council? I know, uh, that was always a welcomed, uh, part of our meetings and, uh, it's good to hear from, we're hearing from all our experts, but it's also good to hear from our customers. I don't know if that would be, uh, something that's able or of interest to anyone else, but I would certainly be in favor of, uh, inviting someone from the student council or whatever, whoever would want to volunteer to perhaps, uh, be, um, as a student liaison to our school board like we had in the past.
For a number of years, we did have, uh, some student liaison or student representative at our table. For years, those students showed up and then I think the last couple of years, it just kind of, students weren't showing up and, but I think what we can do at this table is, is express the board has an interest in, in an invitation and, uh, give that to Mr. Anderson, who can then, um, speak with the high school and figure out um, if and when they'd like to, cause I'm not going to at this table say, we need them. But I think we'd like to open with welcome arms, like if there's a student, if they would like to have that here again, just pass it on. And, and he can let us know the update, uh, future board meeting, whether, whether members are comfortable with that. Yes, Mr. Anderson?
We had, what was it? Three years ago, four years ago, we had the same number. Actually, it was two years in a row. We had different members for a full year. Then the last, not last year, but the first year of COVID, we had students rotating through. I think when we had the students rotating through, they, we lost, completely lost them. And I don't think they really gained any momentum of what they were supposed to be doing. Sometimes they came and just weren't, weren't aware of what they were supposed to be doing. So I think either way it could work, but I think we probably have dementia of the work on rotating through.
I thought it worked better when it was one student representative. They used to have a junior and a senior. If my memory serves me correct, I had it could be the second. Do you remember Brandon?
And then prior to.
Yeah. Whoa, wow. Yeah, wow, wow.
So it could be overlap then?
Yeah, but we found it was just difficult at the end to get one. So I'm open to letting you have an invitation to the student representatives. They have a student rep here and however they'd like to form that, I think. And I don't think we're going to, at this stage, demand or ask them anything. It's just send out the invitation and see if they receive that. Mr. Humphrey?
Certainly, and my son is on the student council now that he's in high school. He's been on the student councils and he's a big nerd like his dad. So he actually brought it up to me that they've been talking about it at their meetings. And I think there's definitely, definite interest to give their viewpoints on things and their thoughts on things. And just, we can throw questions off them and they can provide their report from the trenches. But yeah, I think it'd be worth, worth a shot to extend an invitation for, for our board.
Yeah, in the past, it was really nice because they, they would come and, you know, most of you recall, they'd give a really nice update of what was happening from that perspective about the high school. So it was nice.
And I can certainly follow through on that. And then, so it's sort of a yes and, you know, from my perspective. One of the things I really enjoyed last spring was going to meet with students in, you know, one of the, the small performing arts area. And it was just a great way to actually hear their questions and hear some of the comments that they made about the school. So we can do it both ways, you know, having a student or students here at meetings. But then also, you know, district administrators going out to meet with students. It's a really valuable experience. North, Northfield has a really expansive project called Youth on Board, where they really pushed to have students on not just school board committees, but city committees, county committees, you know, nonprofit groups. You know, they've really pushed it to the nth degree. And I'm not suggesting that, you know, we should do that, you know, in August of, of 2022, but there are some really cool models out there that I think we could at least explore.
Yes, Mr. Humphrey?
And I, I share Jill's concern. It seemed like it kind of teetered off when it was hazard that maybe that was COVID. But, you know, they could maybe rotate through with a well-laid plan. But I, I don't know if it was COVID coincidentally or if it was, you know, kind of pushing it off on different people. But it seemed more consistent early on when there was one person dedicated, you know, dedicated to that. Just a thought. That's all I got. Thanks.
Are there any other comments, questions? If not, we'll move on to action items. Our first action item is a consideration to approve the employee recognition program. Do you have a motion to approve?
Some.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Do you have a second, sir? Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Is there any discussion? See no discussion, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same side. The motion carries. We'll move on to action item B. Consideration to approve employment of Michael Starr. Do you have a motion to approve?
Some.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Schommerach. Is there any discussion?
Oh, abstain from the vote.
I wanted to ask.
Oh, I'm sorry. I, I wouldn't say anything. Mr. Schultz, go ahead.
We're good.
Is there any further discussion? See no further discussion, we'll proceed to vote.
Yeah, one discussion. Just to help Mr. Anderson out. Every year, Mr. Schultz says, "I'm sure Mr. Starr is going to abstain from the vote, but I spoke prior to him having the opportunity to speak."
I don't know what's going on here.
Maybe under the badge.
I, I apologize, Mr. Schultz. Schwartz, no, Schultz.
Is there any further discussion? See no further discussion, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same side. The motion carries on a six to zero vote with one abstention, Mr. Starr. We'll move on to consideration to approve the employment of Mr. Schommerach. Do you have a motion to approve?
Some.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Schwartz. Is there any discussion? Yes, Mr. Schwartz?
I assume Mr. Schommerach will abstain from the vote. Also, I still, you know, I asked some questions before because, and I do appreciate, you know, both of you being these things. And I just was scared, kind of coaching style, I just wanted to make sure, you know, that there wasn't staff that we were, you know, that, oh wait, school board people are showing up so they could take all these positions from everybody. It's like, but I've, I've done some research, I've talked to a lot of people, asked a lot of questions. And there's a need for that, just that you're not taking it away from a staff member that wants to be that position. And, and that's correct, like Mr. Schwartz. So, you know, that was my concern. It was just that, well, while school board members have taken over jobs here. So, and so to make sure that, you know, the public is aware and everyone's aware that this was a position we had a hard time filling and stuff. And we always looking for good signs and stuff, Mr. Starr. So that's, I just want to make that clear, that, you know, we're, we've investigated, everybody's analyzed it. Nobody else wants it. So that Mr. Schommerach, Mr. Starr, so, thank you.
Mr. Schommerach?
Yeah, just a little history. Last year, we had a new girls' basketball head coach. I tried all summer, all fall to find him an assistant and couldn't. I just stepped up at that time, just filled the position, just to make sure the girls had an assistant coach there all the time. So that's why I took it. And now that I've invested, I still think it would be hard to find somebody to replace. But I kind of like the job now.
Ms. Johnson?
Well, that was my question. So, so are you a last resort? Have we tried to fill it with other people? I mean, I'm just, I don't mean that.
I said last year.
I, I, I'm just asking the question, is that, is this, is this like you're filling in this position because nobody else will do it? Or are you, because you just said, because you really like it and you're gonna, so.
Perhaps we could have Mr. Nelson respond to that as far as how the hiring process is done, if you don't mind.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, so last year, there was, it was posted for multiple months and we did not find anybody for that position. And then there's some advantage to having some continuation in coaching staff. We have not sought out that replacement for this year. But it's, I mean, we went two months last year and I don't know if Mr. Schommerach would not have stepped up. I don't know if they would have thought of that.
We may not have had the girls' basketball, I mean, if it weren't for you. But then my other question was.
Go ahead, Ms. Anderson.
School board meetings. Is this going to get in the way of school board meetings?
Mr. Schommerach?
Last year, I think there was one con, I remember two, I missed one game and then I missed one board meeting. But to go back a little bit, there's, I, Brandon, if I answer this better, there's still a lot of open coaching positions that are unfilled year after year. It's hard to find coaches, so I don't think even if we opened it up, that it would be filled.
Okay.
Well, and I want to thank you for stepping up because it, we're just fortunate that this community has individuals such as yourself and your talent, you've learned counted, and you're willing to. You are.
You read last.
You are, but in your college, I mean, I love the humor at this table. So thank you for sharing that with the girls in the community because some people don't do that. And to be able to step up and be willing to do that, coaching is difficult. And so I'm glad you enjoy it and I'm glad that you're willing to step up ahead and do that for the girls in the community. Mr. Schommerach?
Plus just the consistency, these girls have had.
Absolutely.
New coaches, I mean, the seniors this year, this is their third head coach. I don't know how many assistant coaches, so just to have some consistency in coaching helps.
Thank you for stepping up. Yes, Mr. Schwartz?
So we, I think Ms. Anderson's, Eric and Ms. Johnson's, you know, if you can make it to the school board meetings, it would be more crucial to, and stuff. But if you get to the playoffs, we'll let you have all the time off. When?
We're going to the playoffs, right? We're going deep.
All right.
We're undefeated.
Is there any further discussion? See no discussion, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same side. The motion carries six to zero with one abstention, Mr. Schommerach. We'll move on to consideration to approve vice alias and sub pay. Do you still have a motion to approve?
Some.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Schwartz. Discussion, yes, Ms. Anderson?
Sorry. Question, when I'm looking at the subsidies, educational assistance were 13 and 14 last year. They're 13 and 14 again this year. Are we going to be able to get subs at 13 and 14 dollars an hour? And how close are we getting to the EA pay if we even increase that at all?
Mr. Nelson?
Yes, that's a great question. And I can't remember if I put it in the background here. There, that is one of the issues we're facing right now, is, is it enough money? Probably not. But we are right at the area where we're pushing up against our permanent employees. We're hoping that through negotiations that will change and then we'll be able to react with these rates. So right now, the change being proposed and the immediate action that's needed is the teacher substitution rate because that was only in place for the last school year. So I anticipate that your question about not being able to fill one of these, these dollar months with what has happened in the market in the last year or so is true. And we hope to be able to react to that.
And yes, Mr. Schwartz?
Mr. Starr, you're going to abstain from voting for yourself raises here?
I will.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yes, Mr. Schwartz?
But we'll make a comment though about the sub paid went up last year for sub teachers. I saw, I, I did it maybe 10 days last year, that's all I did. Yet I saw the subs that came into the middle school that were elsewhere in Opahenup and Subby and they lived out here. And when I raised, when that raise went in, they came back to our schools. So that was a big, big help to bring subs back into our district. I know it's ester funds right now and I know we can keep in the future, but it sure helped last year to bring subs back to the middle school. It really helped.
Yes, Mr. Schwartz?
Yeah, and it was Mr. Nelson, correct, from on one? We did temporarily in the spring raise it to 170 last spring. And now, now we're at 180 to bring, is that correct?
Yes, Mr. Nelson?
Yes, the, the recommendation to the board was 170. The school board approved it at 180 after discussion.
Okay, so we could compete with it, okay?
Yeah.
Yes, Mr. Schwartz?
One last thing, so just to clarify for a couple of people that called me. So the teacher long-term sub, so there's a bunch of qualifications, I understand, on that. So it has to be 30 consecutive days and it has to be a licensed teacher to do the long-term sub, right? And last year, we only had probably 10 or 12 of those type of people, correct?
Mr. Nelson?
Yes, that's correct. And just to preface that, I don't know if we were able to fill all the long-term sub positions last year. There might be a little bit more need than about the 10 that we have, but we're having trouble filling and then maybe we're using alternate ways. Internal people, overlords, things like that.
Okay.
But, but the tier deal was, yes, about that many last year.
Thank you.
Yes?
If I could further clarify is that licenses, teaching licenses needed if there's a substitution for the same teacher for over 15 days. So then a license is required. The 30-day limit is for what's considered long-term sub. And so once again, of course, you may still need a license and it has to be subbing for the same teacher. So it's not just showing up one day for a particular teacher and then another teacher the next day. You know, that'd be a short-term substitution with long-term sub is same person for 30 days. Yeah.
Thank you.
Ms. Johnson?
And then what is the rate of the long-term sub then? Because it's on.
Yeah, it's based on the, the teacher's contract, but I think Mr. Nelson can give a, a more detailed response.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes, so, and actually, Superintendent Anderson brought it up in the question that we had. But there is statute that refers to when it's 30 days or more. It, it does fall under the, the teacher's agreements. And then, and we do not have collective bargaining agreement language that says a long-term sub is paid any different than any other teacher. So we follow the usual guidelines for hiring a teacher as far as giving credit for experience or a type of degree that they have for that long-term sub position.
Mr. Schwartz?
So to answer your question, there's certain teacher schedules that, I mean, some teachers can make up about $100 a day because they go by the teaching schedule of what the schedule was at the parameters where they were. As usual, at the state of Minnesota, it's a complicated formula, 27,000 different line items and stuff. But to answer your question, that was my concern about how many people were on that last year. It was only 10. So, but some of them can be up depending on what their longevity is, three, one, two, three, four, $100 a day for teaching. Correct?
Ms. Johnson?
So how do we use this? Is that like a, do we have like a pool? Because you were saying we couldn't fill them all. How, how do we, how do we use or how do we prepare to have long-term substitutes? Because we do have people that go and leave, people that are going. Is there a pool or something or?
Mr. Nelson?
Yes, so we do have a long-term sub opening. We do post it and recruit like any other position unless if, you know, somebody had an emergency. We didn't have time, but for maternity leave or other types.
So you know ahead of time?
Usually, you know ahead of time, so we'll post. Now, there are times where maybe it's a grade two classroom and, and we have one of our, our daily substitute teachers that is really good. And, and the principal might say, hey, do you want to cover, cover this maternity leave? And they say, yeah, I'll, I'll do that, you know. And so there is, we do have some internal substitutes that we might use, but often we are approving for long-term subs. And the, the higher daily rates, we had two examples last year where we brought in one of our retired teachers because we could not find anybody to fill that subject area. So we started calling our retirees that retired recently in that subject area. And they, they're, they're ready to be done, but he, he came back. And then the second one was a speech language pathologist. And we have an old school right now for our permanent ones. Getting a long-term sub is almost a miracle. But we found a retiree from another district and they can demand their wage. And so we paid a higher wage for that. But the alternative is we have to provide those services and we would have to use contracting services, which is probably higher than the daily rate, but it's going to be more than what we pay the most that we can pay.
A lot more.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, Mr. Schwartz?
Last comment I make about sub teachers and so forth about the state of Florida, they just signed off down there that if you're prior military personnel with a two-year college education, you can be hired as a teacher in the classroom. It's going to be pretty ugly. Capital letter ugly, they do that. Two-year education, they're going to hire you to be a teacher because you're a veteran. Ugly. Minnesota's got good stats this year, we've been okay. Not that all veterans are ugly, I'm just saying that it's not. No. Two-year education, going to classroom, right.
Any other comments, Mr. Humphrey?
So this is kind of adjacent to this, but how are we able to vote ourselves as a school board a raise at the beginning of the year? And yet we have these guys abstaining from voting themselves a raise here?
That is a very interesting question. You know, I, unless Mr. Nelson knows offhand, it, it might be because of the term employee. You know, because school, in my mind, school board members are employees. So that might be one difference is that perhaps for pay raises, that's a, you know, considered separately. But I know that the board members are, you know, supposed to abstain if there is something that will benefit them directly. So I know that Mr. Mr. Schwartz has the, you know, the right perspective as far as abstaining. But I'm not exactly sure why board members can vote for the raise themselves. That's an interesting question.
Yeah, I don't know if it was Franklin Jefferson that said, you have a Congress who can give themselves a raise. Why would you leave? So I was just kind of seeing it as the same topic and the conflict between what we're doing here, which makes sense. But then early on, we gave ourselves a raise. Just a question and clarification. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Humphrey. Yes?
If I could, uh, just add one more clarification as far as the cost. The. The, um, you know, I'm not sure if Mr. Nelson had time to analyze, like, how many of those long-term subs were covering for people that used all their sick leave or not. Uh, but generally, uh, like with maternity leaves or a lot of other, uh, of those kinds of leaves, you know, they'll use up their sick leave, but then there'll be some unpaid time as well. So there are the costs with long-term subs, but those are at least partially offset by, you know, teachers having to take unpaid time too.
Yeah.
The dollar amount, but just wanted to point that out.
Is there any further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same side. The motion carries six to zero with Mr. Star abstaining, if I'm correct. All right, we'll move on to consideration to approve availability of position. Do I have a motion to approve? So, thank you, Ms. Anderson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Star. Discussion. Seeing no discussion, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same side. The motion carries. We'll move on to consideration to approve e-learning day plan. Do I have a motion to approve? So, thank you, Mr. Schwartz. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Discussion. Yes, Mr. Johnson?
Yeah, um, can you explain, uh, Mr. Anderson, how this would work? I mean, is it, is it like COVID worked, or is it different?
Yeah, thank you for asking that question. Uh, uh, e-learning days are completely different than remote learning, or distance learning, or online only learning during COVID. Completely separate. I mean, they're kinda similar in some ways, uh, but e-learning legislation came about, uh, years before COVID was known as. And, uh, the intent of the statute, uh, that was put in place is that, you know, if there are severe weather emergencies that school districts, if they have a plan that's approved and shared, can call an e-learning day for up to five school days during the year. And, uh, so, you know, we have to go through some motions in order to make that all happen. Uh, but, you know, many school districts, I don't know if it's a majority or not, actually adopt these e-learning plans. Uh, I know that was at least the intent of the administration, um, years ago, to adopt an e-learning plan. The best I could find offhand was kind of a draft copy. It may have been taken to the school board, and I'm not sure. Uh, but I figured, well, I better run this by the school board, just to make sure that we're kinda, you know, crossing our t's and dotting our i's, that it's been reviewed and approved by the school board, if the school board is willing to consider that for this coming year. So it really comes down to two choices. Uh, we could use e-learning days, um, after the first two closure days, or after the first two closure days, we could make up time after the end of the scheduled school year, in order to make up our nets, so.
So how would, I mean, so in a snow emergency, you're not gonna know that's gonna happen. So how would the preparation, how would you be ready to have an e-learning day for students?
Yeah, and that's the trick.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
That would be a, that would be substantial and, you know, meaningful, instead of just, you know, make it up.
Yeah, and, uh, from my perspective, uh, of an emergency, e-learning day is not gonna be effect, as effective as in-person learning.
Right.
So no doubt about it, and I, I don't wanna pretend that it is, cause it's not. So really, the, the point of these e-learning days is to keep engaging students, you know, during that time off, so they can practice some concepts, uh, some can learn some new concepts if it's done really well. And, uh, sometimes it just might mean just having the kids do something while they're at home. It's gonna depend a lot on the actual learning assignments that we come up with. So if the board approves this tonight, uh, you know, we'll be working with, uh, Ed, Education Minnesota representatives to kind of fine-tune what those projects could look like, you know, from home, cause elementary can be different from middle school and high school. Uh, the elementary kids, uh, won't have school-issued learning devices at home, so it could look different. Uh, some schools, uh, like Northfield again, uh, you know, give like bingo charts. And so you might have on day one, uh, an elementary student may need to do one hundred jumping jacks and read a story at home. And, you know, they, they just follow those activities, uh, so that the students at least are engaged in some way. Uh, but it's exceedingly difficult to follow the, the normal train of curriculum, you know, teaching and learning because of all the emergency situations. So it's really just a, a waste.
Assignment, that would be pre-designed.
Yeah, and we have not consulted enough yet with Education Minnesota. I did consult with the first draft of the plan, but we have more work to do. And so it's one of those things where if we can get it approved, so it can be shared with parents at the beginning of the school year, then at least we're compliant with a statute, and then we'll work collaboratively, uh, you know, as far as what that could look like. Uh, just because we have the plan in place doesn't mean I have to call the e-learning day. You know, we go through the first two days, and if it's just not worth it, um, you know, if we aren't able to come up with a really solid plan, you know, that makes sense to people, you know, we can always revert to adding days after the end of the school year, so. And I know that, um, uh, you know, Ed Minnesota, you know, has the same concerns. You know, they wanna make sure that this is worthwhile as well, so we just have to work out those details.
Mr. Humphrey?
I'm a big fan of e-learning. I think it, it, it has things you gotta think critically about and outside the box. Uh, but I would imagine, uh, a day of e-learning is about as focused as a day added on at the end of the year when you're supposed to be in the summer.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and so, um, it's, it, but this is gonna be something similar to COVID, where people had a hard time, you know, continuing their work at home, and then other people had an all-right time because the parents need to be able to step up and say, all right, do your work, let's focus here, let's actually. And we have to be able to have something tangible that not, perhaps maybe the elementary that doesn't have, uh, access to computers or their own computer or whatever, which is hard to believe. It seems like every home, and, and maybe some people do, but there could be outside-the-box thinking things like you had there with the, the Northfield example. So I would be, um, greatly in favor of this, I mean, almost for all the snow days, although sometimes a snow day is fun just to get out as well. But, uh, I, I, I think if you ask people to give up their summer versus continue with something, uh, I think a lot of people would be in favor of this, so I'm definitely in favor of what you're speaking of.
Mr. Schwartz?
Yeah, I, I concur with, with Mr. Humphrey. Um, so there are other people, is this new to the state, or is this a, uh, is there other districts that are using it? We don't think. Uh, I know the statute was put into place several years ago. It was before COVID. I don't know how many school districts actually do it.
Okay.
Uh, but I, I know there are at least dozens.
Right.
If not more.
Any further discussion? So you'll keep us updated, uh?
Definitely, yeah, yeah. This is, uh, you know, the, the only reason I brought it up today. Obviously, we're not gonna have snow, uh, hopefully in September. But, um, you know, the, the statute requires a board-approved plan, and we have to share it with parents at the beginning of the school year. And there's some disagreement about what that means. But, you know, I kinda, I'm a, a rule follower, and so I wanna follow the bureaucratic mess just to get things approved. And then in this case, we'll, we'll need some time to, to work collaboratively with teachers and see what it looks like. And, uh, you know, a year from now will be a lot easier, because we have the e-learning plan in place, and if the board wants to continue with it, then, you know, it'll be an easy step.
Well, I wanna thank you for being proactive and, um, coming up with a plan that now, depending on what you and Ed Minnesota decide, or the discussions at the board table, what I'm hearing is without this plan, there's not even a e-learning day possibility. So I think this is an important first step moving forward, that at least we can have, or we give our educators and, and Mr. Anderson another tool in the toolbox to find out whether or not he uses that tool. We'll be, to Mr. Anderson, and of course, I've staffed him within our building, so.
And we can bring back something in a month or two, you know, to kind of give an update. And if the, the Ed Minnesota or the school board says timeout, you know, let's not do it this year, then, you know, I just won't call the e-learning days, so.
Yes, Mr. Johnson?
So one more question. So would this then be accredited to the teachers, um, for their required? I mean, that, that would be a teaching day for them?
Correct.
Then also?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, the e-learning day, uh, counts as a duty day. Uh, and, you know, for teachers, uh, it also counts for instructional minutes for the school district to meet minimum thresholds, you know, that are, that are set by the state.
Any further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same side. The motion carries. We'll move on to consideration to approve the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three food, food, food service prices. Do I have a motion to approve? So, thank you, Ms. Anderson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Is there any discussion? Yes, Mr. Scholmack?
Just wondering, um, I don't know if this goes to Eric or who it goes to. Why the second lunch is almost twice as much as the first lunch?
Yes, Mr. Humphrey?
Uh, that's consistent with what we've done in, uh, you know, the pre-pandemic. I think, um, you know, what we're trying to do is, uh, the, the cost of food, there's a, there's a subsidizing effect. It doesn't truly cost two dollars and fifty cents, two dollars and twenty cents to provide that, so we certainly want to provide a cost-effective meal to students. But when you go and you get your second lunch, I think we have to charge a little more in line of what the true cost is. And so then that's where you see that kinda go up. The same, same reason why the adult meal is that. It's not that you're getting twice as much food, it's just that we have to charge a little more.
Well, and if I'm correct, the first lunch is subsidized through federal dollars? And the second lunch is not, if I'm correct? And so that's the difference is, you're getting no help, this one, you know, and that's, so. If parents have an issue with it, they may wanna send a granola bar or something.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify that that's why it's so much is that the government pays that extra part that isn't properly taxed.
Correct. And we are monitoring the legislative development as well. I mean, obviously, if this, the state or federal government, you know, changes our, our funding formulas, then I, I'm certain that we would change ours to, to mirror those, those moves as well. So this is based on anticipated, um, subsidization and, uh, and funding rates.
Yes, Mr. Scholmack?
And last year, the meals were covered by the state or feds. Is that program still going, or is that still over?
That program has ended. So during COVID, the federal government, uh, USDA stepped in and made the free lunch program available to all students to include breakfast. And so that is something that, uh, the federal government, I, I believe the, that they felt they no longer had the authority to do, given that there was no more emergency COVID procedures in place in order for that funding mechanism to exist. So it ended, that program ended at the end of last school year. Uh, the state legislature expressed an interest in picking it up on a state level to continue that forward, but the legislate, uh, the legislative session did not produce any results to continue that funding.
Yes, Mr. Scholmack?
So I know a lot of parents didn't fill out the application for the free and reduced last year because there was almost no need. It was just free for everybody. Is there something gonna be put out, or is there something gonna be at open houses letting them know that meals are not free this year? If you need help, sign up here, or?
Yeah, we have started that communication. Uh, one, one mechanism, it's not the only one, but one mechanism is we do have our, what used to be Saints Quarterly, it's our, our, our publication, we do it pre, and, or beginning of school year, end of school year. Our beginning of school year, uh, Saints publication does include the free and reduced application as a part of that publication. Uh, and we're also continuing our, uh, other outreach efforts and, and other, to Mr. Langquist.
There's several communication blasts planned. One is tomorrow, and we're, call off that one. It's about, uh, the nutrition benefits or the educational benefits. But there is one coming out in addition to the Saints News, um, uh, communication with Blas that all last spring as well. So this is around five or six of sending that same information. And, and we do it, not because we're trying to be annoying, but because it's critically important that people, uh, take advantage of this opportunity. Not only does it help them and their family, but also can help our school. So it, it's, it's a service that's there. They can use it if it applies. And there's only one way to know if it applies, and that's the, about the application.
And when we do get those families that do apply, it also does help some of our, our funding formulas as well. It forms with things like compensatory aid and, and things like that. So, so it, it's a dual benefit, because they might qualify for things even if it's not free or reduced lunches. There's other areas in which you can benefit the family, and then we, we see the benefit in our funding, uh, funding formulas as well. So it's, it's mutual, but it's, it's also convincing families to actually get the, you know, to do the paperwork and get it submitted to us.
Yes, Mr. Humphrey?
It's, uh, first page of the iCampus two right now. I've seen it, oh, I mean, two or three different platforms are, thank you.
If I could add, that comes, I wanna echo what Mr. Bartuch said. This is a big deal in terms of school funding, uh, because a lot of schools are anticipating fewer kids to fill out those forms, and that directly impacts Title I funding.
Yeah.
And compensatory funding. And so, you know, if there's a significant change in how many people qualify, you know, in complete applications, that could, uh, mean hundreds of thousands of dollars in, uh, lower revenue for ISD fifteen. So it's a big deal, and, uh, that's gonna be on our cabinet agenda, uh, coming out on the seventeenth, is to just see if there are some other ways we can get the message out, because it's a big deal, not just for the kids and their families, but for the school district finances.
Yes, Mr. Langquist?
It impacts athletics and activities too.
Yeah.
To say no, you're doing it. Oh, Scholmack, thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same side. The motion carries. We'll move on to upcoming meetings and preliminary topics. Go ahead, Mr. Anderson.
Yes, um, I included, um, you know, a list of the upcoming meetings, and I thought I'd just take a minute here to kind of explain my thinking. It'll probably change with time. So I tried to highlight in red some of the changes that have been made since the last month, uh, for upcoming meetings here in the next month or two, um, you know, because there's a change. So I added information about academic achievement results and goals. Uh, and I think the second meeting in September is the logical time to, to bring that up, because we'll have all the state data, and we'll have time for goal preparation. So I put those in red. Uh, if there were changes months from now, I didn't bother putting it in red, because it just is gonna be part of the flow. Uh, what I'd like to do is to have a month or a year-long rolling agenda. So after tonight's meeting, I'll take some information and then place it for the second, or the first meeting in August, a year from now. Uh, and so you'll keep seeing twelve months, and that's just easier for, uh, Ms. Toll and I to kind of monitor things and make sure it's set up the way we wanna set up in, in advance. So that's kind of the, the reasoning behind it. I will tell you that things will be more refined and more accurate, you know, the longer I'm here. So twenty years from now, when I'm presenting this, hopefully it'll be right, right in line. Uh, but it's a work in progress, so please, you know, as items come up, if I have forgotten something, you know, please just let me know, and we'll, we'll work into the schedule. Uh, I do have a question for you. Uh, meeting in March, uh, there's, uh, you know, we have spring break in March. Uh, the meeting is currently scheduled during another week. Uh, but I don't know what's happened in the past in terms of, you know, do we have both meetings in March? Or do we try to not have the one that's joining the spring break? I see, uh, Ms. Anderson, it sounds like we don't have that meeting in March?
We have the first one.
Okay, so I will delete that from the schedule, uh, yeah, cause I had forgotten to check into that earlier. So it's in red, and I'll just delete that line. Uh, we have not approved the board meeting schedule for twenty twenty-three, but I'll remove it for now, and, you know, we can always change our mind later.
Yes, Mr. Scholmack?
With the election this year for the school board, when, how, long after that do we need to certify the vote?
Uh, yeah, the canvassing of the election results.
Canning.
Yeah, I believe. Yeah, I believe it's...
Is that a bit of a meeting?
Yeah, those required meetings, usually I think it's a week after the election. Is that right, Mr. Scholmer?
It's a short, yeah, it's a shorter round after the election. I believe it's either five or seven days.
Official. Right.
Yeah, so, and, yeah, I'm just pretty sure that's a special meeting. I don't think they call it in campus for that meeting. I'll double-check on the dates, but it's usually just a few days after the election.
Okay. Now, every school district's different. You know, sometimes boards will officially set the date for the canvassing, you know, so that it's formally approved. Other times, you know, the special meeting can be called like other particular meetings. So I don't know what we've typically done here. I'll do it either way, if we formally approve it or not.
I think in the past, many of them were called special. Yeah, a special session, and sometimes they're early on Friday morning at...
Sure.
Eight o'clock, and I think last time, not everyone was there. I'm not going to... But as long as you have the majority of the board, we were able to do a special session. But obviously, we're open to the full board giving their input. Ms. Johnson?
What is it for? What is it, is that obviously a ton of, what does it mean?
It's, you certify whoever won the vote, so we just approve the certification of the individuals who were elected on by the community member.
Communicated to them, or what?
They are communicated with, I think, prior to that. As you probably were...
I wasn't. I was near the votes that I saw. I know it's never, nobody ever contacted me until the first meeting, right, that I got a meeting invite. So I, that's why I'm just wondering, how does, what is the purpose of it? Is it...
Oh, yeah, it's the actual...
So it's an actual certification or whatever? Okay, got it.
Mr. Scholmer?
I guess, I mean, we could, it doesn't have to be tonight or even the next committee, but if we could just get something on the calendar.
So it's here for everyone?
Yeah, so you can schedule it. Makes sense.
Like what Kelly said, it's, we just need a majority of board members.
Right.
Usually, it's a formality. You know, a lot of things have happened over the last couple of years, where, you know, there could be questions about, you know, vote counts and those kinds of things. Sometimes elections are very, very close, and so then, you know, this particular meeting takes on extra prominence. But, yeah, I think the key now is to get something on the schedule. And we'll have all the tapes from the counties, so we'll know how the votes are, and we'll have a tally, and they'll be ready to go that day.
Right, Mr. Scholmer?
Yeah, because I think we've had to canvass one vote twice due to an error in the commerce system. Right, last year. I can't remember what year it was, but they messed up something and did it twice a minute. And call an emergency meeting, because we didn't have that much time.
Oh, yeah.
So there will be a meeting. Do board members want something sooner than later? Is that what I'm hearing from the board? A date sometime within a week of the election? Mr. Scholmer?
Yeah, I mean, we can pick it in October. I don't want to wait until then, October, or the, I think it's October 24th, that we have to set it.
Oh, yeah, gotcha. I understand. Yeah, we can do it at the next meeting, set the meeting for, you know, within a week after the election.
So I was just trying to give them guidance of what the board is kind of wanting, or is that what I'm hearing, something? Perfect. All right. Is there any further discussion? Seeing no, oh, I guess we're not vote on this, so.
Just good discussion.
Just good discussion. All right, anything else on that, Mr. Anderson?
That's all I have for now. Just let me know if you have any topics or any issues that I can add to the agenda, and we'll go from there.
All right, at this time, we'll move on to school board member reports. I'll start with Ms. Johnson.
I don't have anything.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson, Mr. Starr.
Nope, nothing here.
Thank you, Mr. Starr, Mr. Scholmer.
This is my first meeting, and I just wanted to welcome Ms. Anderson, your first official one.
It's been a pleasure and certainly a huge advantage that audio didn't work with the first one, so, but yeah, I'm thrilled to be here.
And then I just want to echo a couple of things off of the superintendent's report. If you want to apply for the school board, do by August 16th, so please fill it out. I know there's a lot of people out there that love to talk about the school board, so be involved.
Right.
Welcome to Vanessa.
Yeah.
Welcome to the team. I guess there's a primary tomorrow, which doesn't involve us, but go vote.
Mr. Anderson, election judge.
Yeah.
What he always says, "Or I take a sandwich." Welcome, Mr. Anderson.
Thank you.
Welcome, Vanessa. Again, my first meeting, if you as a superintendent. I also want to say thank you to all the staff for getting things ready for back to school, because I know everyone's working on that already. This is a busy time of year, so I want to thank everyone in advance for what they're going to be doing, or what they've already started doing. And that's all I have. Thank you, Ms. Anderson, Mr. Humphrey.
So when I ran for school board, it was to bring people's voices to the table, and I believe I've done that. And I believe everyone here listens to the public. I'm really proud of that, and I hope with the new candidates, that they do the same. And then the second thing, when I ran for school board was, because I wanted to share the experience I was having in the district, and my wife was having with our two kids. And right now, I got a son who's making the jump from middle school to high school, and he's just giddy, loving and excited, the whole thing. And our learning didn't stop this summer. We still made him read. He's still pointing out things and having conversations and discussions, and doing their part as a parent. And then I also have, this is just a proper moment, but my daughter is entering her second year of college down in Creighton, and I am bringing her back Wednesday already, where did the summer go? But again, she and my son both have had a very good experience in this district. And if anyone is having a hard time again, I'd like to extend the welcome to have a conversation. And maybe I can share some of what we found has worked for us, because I believe that there's a lot of really good things going on here. And it's an exciting time of year for everyone who's in this, both on the employee side and the student side and the families as well. So I'm looking forward to the start of another good year, as my tenure comes to an end.
Some excitement with that reaction there.
And that.
We've still got a few months. Mr. Schwartz?
So we still have like a week to talk together, so.
Yeah.
Everyone could have.
Good, fresh clothes.
A fresh place, so.
Sure, we're good, it's awesome.
My favorite part of the meeting is the gifts. From St. Francis Middle School, Black Flag Giving Fund, $45 to the General Fund for Supplies. And the St. Francis Track and Field Cross Country Booster Club, $3,520 to purchase some hurdles. I got to give them their hurdle business, I'm down on it. I want to welcome, is it Ms. Trolley?
Toll.
Troll?
Toll, like a toll booth.
Okay.
Toll booth.
Welcome. You have some tough shoes to fill.
Hi, I'm very glad.
I want to thank Ms. Springer for all your years of service, and make her hear a little bit more of you. I might be going on those days or so, but so, thank you for your service, for all the years that you've done, and done a lot of special things to make the meetings go on in the scenes that people don't know about. Thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Well said, Ms. Springer.
And I would like to welcome Vanessa to the meeting. It's nice to see you. Well, now at least as you're communicating with board members now, you start, you have a face to voice.
Sure.
So thank you, we welcome you. It's nice to have someone living in the community, working for the schools. It's always good.
Yeah, we just moved to St. Francis a year ago in May, and we have two kids in the school system. And we, my husband and I, my husband is actually coaching the boys' basketball team and assistant on the boys' team as well. And we've just been really impressed with the community here. We moved out of the city where your neighbor was two feet away, and now, you know, we can't even see our neighbors. But the community here actually feels way smaller, which we've really been impressed with and really embraced. And our kids are thriving, and we're really happy, so I'm super excited to be here.
Well, welcome to the board table, but also welcome to the community. It's been there for a long time. We won't mention it on the news, because it was up to the 30, but it's a wonderful community to raise your kids. I raised my kids here, and now my kids are raising their kids here. So it's a great community. So welcome. And welcome, Mr. Faric again. It's nice to see you and your wonderful little boy here again. So we look forward to seeing you at our meetings. And again, thank you to everyone who's stepping up and getting ready. A lot of people think the summer's taken off, and as many of you are enjoying summer vacations, many of our staff are hard at work preparing for the children this day, come forth here, so. I think that is all we have tonight, so we'll adjourn the meeting here, and we'll see you in a couple weeks. Thank you.